All right, I will go ahead and call the order. The Planning Commission meeting for August 7th, 2018. First on our agenda is to adopt our agenda. Do we have any additions or revisions?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'll move that we adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will proceed accordingly. Next on our agenda is the introduction of our new senior planner.
So, Chair, members of the Commission. Paul Morel is a new senior planner. He has a dual master's degree in public administration and community and regional development, or planning, and from the city, or not the city, but University of New Mexico. And he worked for the city of Albuquerque for a little while, and then came back up to Minnesota and worked for Falcon Heights for the last three and a half years. So, I think we got you at that end. So, we're very excited that he's here, and he's gonna, he's got a really good experience and a lot of knowledge in GIS, so we're excited.
Chair, Commission, thank you for having me, and I look forward to working with you.
Welcome, Paul.
Welcome.
All right, well, I guess we'll get to know us as we go throughout the meeting, as we continue to work together. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the July 17th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Does anybody have any adjustments or additions?
None.
None.
Hearing none, I'll move that we accept, approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is discussion items. We've got a couple items tonight. We'll start with the downtown parking task force. Pat, you gonna walk us through that?
Yes. So, the City Council approved a 10-member downtown task force at their last meeting, with two of the members being from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission tonight should nominate two of the members to serve on the commission. And just to get a better idea of how long this is gonna take and what you're volunteering for, there are probably gonna be three night meetings, maybe four, but most likely three, and it'll probably be between four to six months. We're planning on hiring a consultant to help us through the process. The membership is gonna be, what the City Council decided on was, two members from the City Council, two members from the Planning Commission, three members from the businesses, and three residents. So, that's how they came up with the 10. And then the City Council is scheduled to officially appoint the task force at their next meeting on August 13th. Is there any other questions on that?
Sounds good. So, as a group, we need to come up with a nomination for two members.
Correct.
Are there any members of the Planning Commission that are interested?
I would volunteer.
I'd volunteer.
I'd be interested.
I would be. We can run the whole thing.
Well, that's good.
You're not the only body, because there's probably about, and I, you know, running these task force and steering committees for every other city, it's like pulling teeth to get volunteers. And this parking downtown task force, I've had, like, 10 residents who signed up for three spots, and about four business owners who have signed up for three spots, so you're not the only one that have more than the spots needed.
Yeah, I think that's great, that, I mean, like you said, it's been tough to get Planning Commission members in the past to stay on board or stay with us, so I love the enthusiasm of the new members here, and that's, that's great to see. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
And I don't have to do it. No, just kidding.
Well, I, I think that I appreciate the volunteers. It sounded like we had four or five of them. I think some perspective that I'll share is, I think that for some of you that will be around here for a while, I think this would be a good opportunity, because I think that this is a really important issue facing our city, and I think that it's gonna take some champions to not only be vested in terms of the process in getting to a good recommendation, but also seeing it come to fruition. I mean, communicating with our, with others, communicating with the residents, but also be part of an action plan in the future, as I would assume that there are some actionable items that would come out of a, out of a study like that. So, I think that that's one, like, if I'm thinking about criteria that makes for good participation. Another one, I feel like familiarity and participation with the comprehensive plan may be of value. So, like, my thought is that a good mix would be, you know, someone who has experience on the Planning Commission, also has some vested knowledge based on the long-term comprehensive plan, but I also think some, some new perspective, you know, and recent addition to the Planning Commission is also, if we're selecting two, that seems like, like a good balance. I don't know what all that means, but that's, I'm just kinda, kinda, kinda sharing that. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Well, I just, I'd like to ask a question about the formalities of the study itself. That's who we're hiring to do this physical study, you know, or be, beyond a population of parking thing, which we have that now, anyway. We know how much, how many parking spaces we have. Then the study would be for demand, then?
Right.
Would be how, how it would be used?
So, what they'll look at is, they'll look at the parking supply, the parking demand, how much of that supply is being used now, and then they'll look at the future parking demand, based on, like, the total development of the downtown, consistent with the downtown plan, how much parking is gonna be needed, or how much is it on the existing uses, or existing parking spaces? And then what are some solutions of increase, either increasing parking supply, or doing shared parking, or is it signage, or any of these other ideas? If they are gonna build more parking, how do you finance that? So, those are the things that the study would come up with, and hopefully come up with recommendations, and also implementation part to get it done.
As of today, we have a challenge, and we have two new businesses opening up in the next six months or so, that are gonna add a lot more burden to our current parking situation, so it'll be interesting to see how that plays out.
I know this one, what's?
We have the restaurant opening up in the old Creamery building, and then we have the borough opening up in the relatively, any of those that's gonna open?
The paper said fall.
Is that in the grocery store?
Yes, that's where the, the, Axon period comment, in the mini golf and the restaurant venue.
As a new person here, I don't know the buildings by their old names. The Creamery, for instance, which one is it?
That's the more mature building across from School of the Wise, where Inky Brewery used to be. It's the brick building, this way, like, two blocks.
Okay. I need a map that has the old name, so I know where, yeah. Okay.
I have a question. And I'm just not 100% sure about the legality of it. So, we know that the CBD has its own parking calculation. Do we have any possibility to reconfigure that zoning, to allow for a completely different ratio?
Different ratio for?
Parking calculations.
So, we, most likely, won't be rezoning properties, but what we could be doing is looking at a different ratio for the CBD.
That's kinda part of what this is about, just trying to figure that out.
Okay.
Right.
Great.
You look at the notes from, for tonight, you're gonna see an 80, 80, 80, and 94, and 98, and 2006, for all modifications to the calculations and how they did the CBD planning.
And those are based on city ordinance, right? So, the city ordinance dictates what that ratio is.
Okay.
So, that wouldn't come from here.
Right.
Or unless the recommendation of the commission, or the task force recommends change to ordinance.
That's what I was gonna say to Laura, is that if it were an easy answer to your question, then we wouldn't need a task force to solve this, right? So, but it does seem like the, the result of the task force would be to develop a range of recommendations in response to your exact question. And there's likely some other questions associated with that, but I think that's probably one of the key ones.
And I think the largest one is, where are we gonna find more parking within our confines? I mean, we know what we have, so we know we have to go up or down. There's only so many flat lot available, and you can figure all that in right now, and you're still stuck with that number, and still you start going down with ramps, or up with ramps. And that's, that's the solution in every other city I've done work in as a construction person, or a builder, is, any building you see, like, in the city of Minnetoka, you see five stories, there's at least two underground apart. And that's just how it's done nowadays. That's the only way you can provide so much in a restricted area. And we have a restricted area, if any city does, so. That's the mind thought going forward, is that we have to be creative to go both directions, not just flat.
Okay, I'd like to withdraw my offer to volunteer, because I don't think I know enough to do it.
Okay.
But thank you for considering me.
One thing that might be valuable with me being on a task force is my experience in commercial estate, and parking ratios that I'm familiar with businesses needing to be successful. That is a big component of, I think, how parking calculations should be created, be it office users, be it restaurants, any type of retail.
Good. Okay, so, I heard John volunteer, I heard Scott, I heard Laura, others? Is that who I heard? Okay.
I'm flux either way, I got plenty to do. Scott wants to see.
No, I do too.
Backpedaling.
No, I'm happy to, I'm happy to. I think, I think one of us should do it, from, just from, you know, from this and our, both of us, you know, with the 2040 comp plan also, being on.
Yeah.
I have plenty to do, if you have time, it's all yours.
I mean, it's as easy as that.
And you both wore blue shirts, so.
Maybe I'll make a nomination. Is that, is that a fair way to do it?
Absolutely.
I would nominate that Scott and Laura join.
I second that.
I, I like, I like Scott's familiarity with the Planning Commission, and also experience on the comprehensive plan. I think that's great. I think Laura, you sort of balance that out with your fresh perspective and being new to the Planning Commission, and it sounds like you've got some background and expertise that could offer value to that committee, so that's who I would nominate.
And she does have a blue shirt on, too.
Team, go team blue. Is that, does the others support that? Anybody have concerns with that?
I think John seconded you on that.
There's a second.
Is this an official, do we need a?
It's a good way to do it.
Nomination and a, and a second? All right, so I heard John second.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? All right, congratulations, Scott and Laura. Do good work. Next on our agenda is our next discussion item, which is the future zoning code changes.
So, to comply with the 2040 comprehensive plan, the city will have to make some zoning changes to be consistent with the comp plan. What staff is recommending is to look at the zoning ordinance and rewrite it chapter by chapter over time. It, it wouldn't be something done overnight, but something would done in-house, and because it's in-house, we can't do it right away. But the idea is taking the zoning ordinance out of the municipal code, and you can have it numbered a lot easier than the way it is numbered now. It would still be enforceable, but it's just, it's much user, much more user-friendly than having it part of the municipal code. And then what we would do is rewrite the ordinance chapter by chapter. Each, each time we do that, we'd bring it to the Planning Commission, have a discussion with the Planning Commission of, what do you like, what don't you like about the chapter, and then go, go from there. The first two chapters that we need to get done is the floodplain ordinance and the shoreline district overlay. Hoyson and Kogler is doing the shoreline ordinance, as you know, and we'll probably do the floodplain ordinance in-house. Before we do that, some minor changes that we'd like to have the Planning Commission consider. The first one is to prohibit grading of slopes 18% or greater. When I worked at the city of Chaska, the, the planning director there determined that 18% was the magic number for farmers who, because Chaska and Victoria basically are developing into farmland, that they wouldn't grade. And so, those are the, the areas that developed the trees, the trees would grow in those areas that the farmers weren't grading. So, that, Chaska, they prohibit all grading on 18% or, or greater, just to preserve trees. The second thing that we noticed, Paul and I noticed, is the accessory structures. If you, staff sent out a, kind of a chart of all the accessory structures of some surrounding communities, and there's only a handful in Victoria that are allowed as an accessory structure. We did get a, the kind of, the impetus to this was a request, somebody wanted to put a bathroom down by the lake, because they had a really long property, and they didn't want people to go back to the house, to go to the restroom, they wanted it down there. We can't, we can't approve it, even though, I'm not even sure if the Planning Commission and City Council wants to allow bathrooms down in the lake, but we couldn't approve it, because it's not a permitted accessory use. So, that's kinda one of the reasons why we wanted to have that discussion with the Planning Commission tonight, have that discussion of, do we want to have, allow bathrooms down by the lakes, or not? And then while we're having that discussion, are there some other accessory uses that are, are kinda like no brainers that we wanna include in our ordinance? Things like docks, things like parking spaces, signs, are very typical accessory use in residential districts. Let's see, what else? Satellite dish antennas, fences is another, and retaining walls are another accessory use, which is very typical, that we don't list in our ordinance, so you, somebody could say that they're not allowed in residential districts. And then essential services utilities is another one, common one, where the, it's an accessory use of the residential, to have the cable, the electrical, the sewer type of utilities. So, with that, I'll, have any questions?
There's a question on that. It's just, because it doesn't say we can, but it doesn't say we can't, does that make it a allow or disallow a use?
Well.
So, then putting docks, using docks as an example, we've been using, putting docks on lakes since before time.
Right, so.
And are they technically legal, based upon what I just, think I just heard?
They'd be, technically, they're non-conforming uses, because they're not, our ordinance doesn't allow them under those single-family zoning district. So, those things would be allowed, because they're.
But with that being said, under the regular zoning district, it is allowed under the shoreline district, and that's where the dock's gonna occur. That's why we added that back seven, eight, nine, 10 years ago, when it first started. It's allowed under Section 109, 237, letter number three, under design and development standards. It's a permitted accessory structure within the shoreline district.
It should be listed in the zoning, the zoning section two, as well.
Well, the shoreline ordinance is in the zoning section.
Well, it's in that, in the, like, the R1 zoning district. Whatever the property is zoned, is where you find your permitted uses and your accessory uses and your conditional uses, and you list them all out.
Not all of our R1 properties are under a shoreline ordinance. I think that was the impetus of that, is that fact that you're gonna have a dock only within a shoreline ordinance, not under all R1 properties. So, it's prescriptive in that nature. Where it wouldn't apply to everything in the R1 zoning district, it applies to the overlay district that affects that R1. That's the idea that, my belief was, or my thought at the time was, the shoreline district overlays that, anything within that is allowed to have a dock. You wouldn't have one normally in a R1 district without a shoreline overlay.
Right, so, I gotta check with our city attorney, but again, this is, you see a number of other cities that have lakes, like Chan Assen, that have docks as an accessory use, and they're R1 zoning district, and they all have shoreline ordinance overlays as well.
Going back to the comment about rewriting all the zoning ordinance we just discussed, how does that affect what we've just done the last 18 months or two years, rewriting most of those?
Well, that's one reason why we'd come back before we started working on any of the chapters, to talk to the Planning Commission, what have you done, and making sure we're not changing things that you already did. Exactly.
So, with the request for the bathhouse, what, how can I say this? Even in an R1, a bathhouse is not a recognized structure, per building code, Minnesota State Resident, Residential Code. It would be, if they were gonna build something, it would be a detached accessory structure, period. Now, does it have plumbing to it? Yes, it does. Okay, well, that's fine. That could be a small shed, a garage, anything can have plumbing in it, if it's not within the shoreline ordinance of 100 feet. We have that written in the shoreline also. So, to say they, we don't have the wording "bathhouse," we don't need it, it's an accessory structure, detached accessory structure, no matter what they wanna call it. They could call it a shovel shed, and have a sink in there to wash their hands when they're done shoveling. They wanna, if they wanna label it that, that's fine, it's still a detached accessory structure, and it, and that's, language is available in R1, and in our shoreline to protect it.
Right, but I think there's some questions about allowing plumbing in accessory structures.
I don't, I don't think you could do that, you couldn't disallow that, unless it's within the shoreline, as, as we sit right now.
So, what, this particular question, it's outside the shoreline, or it's, it's outside, it's outside, it meets the 100-foot buffer?
Okay.
So, you could have it sewer, but our ordinance, and again, doesn't say that accessory structure could have sewer to it or not, and that's the question that.
I don't believe it has to. I believe the state building code covers that and says it can. You can have.
Right, but.
Services within your property, if it's not blocked by an ordinance, right?
But there's, the question of this, for the city, is, do we, do you want to have these accessory structures with sewer? Just because it can be allowed under the building code doesn't mean that the city has to allow that to happen. I think, so, what is it? Chan Assen specifically allows water-oriented structures, but specifically says no water or sewer to it. So, a city can be more restrictive than the building code if they want to, but then that's, I guess, the question I'm asking.
And my, for my clarity, that's in their R1 zoning, correct? Is what you're telling me?
Right.
So, that language, exact same language, is in our overlay shoreline district, because that's where you have a water-oriented structure.
But it doesn't say anything about sewer or water, and that's what.
It does. Ours does. In our shoreline district? Look up, Section 109, 237, under design and development standards, number two and three. Number two, letter E. It's directly in there, no sewer or water.
For structures within the 100 feet?
Correct.
I'm asking you, what does the Planning Commission and City Council wanna do with those structures outside the 100 feet?
And then, I guess my question is, how can we deny someone that they can have it, if it's, if it's already allowed, and we don't negate it in the R1? I don't see a problem with that, I guess. Detached garage, anything like that? I mean, that's kinda the reason people build detached garage sometimes, is to have a secondary place, they're doing work, they don't wanna go in the house dirty, they have a bathroom in there. If it's done to code, I don't have an issue with that at all, especially. That's why we have codes in place, and to protect the property, the neighbors, and everyone else from something like that.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, Todd, but I, I'm hearing the, the nuance that Pat's trying to get to, in terms of, in a situation where we're in shoreline.
Well, we're not in shoreline, no.
Well, we are, we're in shoreline, even though we're within, we're beyond 100-foot setback. We're talking about, like, a riparian lot. Is there, is there, or should there be more increased sensitivity around a sewered accessory structure that, you know, 120 feet back, setback from the shoreline? Different from a typical city residential lot that's nowhere near a body of water?
So, then.
I mean, that's what you're, that's what you're trying to ask, is that, that nuanced condition where it's a riparian lot, you're setback at least 100 feet, but is that the same as standard R1, or is there increased sensitivity in that situation?
We'll kinda address it twice, then, because we already limited it at the 100-foot. We might as well get rid of that, and say, none, period, or subject to review, because we already said 100 foot on a riparian lot.
Right, well, I think that's the, that's the question.
Yeah, exactly.
By him, by Pat, by Pat asking the question, it's not that we have to change it, it's, do we, if we, if we talk about it as a commission tonight, and is our recommendation that we're comfortable with how it's covered? That no sewer or water is allowed within that 100-foot setback of the, of the water body? And are we saying we don't have any increased sensitivity when it's, you know, at least 100 feet from a body of water, is it same as a typical lot? Or should we recommend changing it in some way, that either restricting it, or there's some other provisions? So, am I capturing that right?
That's, that's half the argument. The other argument is, just in a regular R1 zoning district, again, a lot of cities don't allow the water and sewer to accessory structures, because all that, it enables people to have living quarters in an accessory structure without any city permits. You can get, if you have, allow the water and sewer go to an accessory structure, they can turn the, the building into a, a living unit without any permits. And so.
That's not true, though, because in Victoria, we cover that with the CUP. You can't have a dwelling, a detached dwelling unit without a CUP.
Right.
Legally.
That's what, a lot of people do this stuff illegally. That's the question, and.
That's gonna happen, though, but to restrict a homeowner on how they use their property, you know, if they're within the code, and obviously, this 100-foot came from somewhere, it was an arbitrary number, probably the DNR, or the watershed district, and I just, personally, I feel this is a solid number. I hate to see us putting so many rules on people's lots, on how to use them, how they can use them. It's, obviously, this hasn't been an issue ever before, this 100-foot mark with this.
How does this differ? In reality, if somebody has a swimming pool, and it really, in fact, doesn't, does it?
Not to me, that's an accessory structure also.
Exactly, but.
But.
They're all over the place with plumbing.
That's just my feeling, and I'm not trying to speak for anyone else here, but I think the 100-foot is a good number, and it doesn't need to be addressed in the R1, but Pat, you have more experience with this than I do, obviously, but it's, when we start, start making rules up for absolutely no reason, or we haven't found a cause where someone had something at 150 feet and polluted the whole stream, because the toilet overflowed for a week or whatever, we have never had anything like that, so we don't really have any reason to come up with restrictions for the use of people's properties. Personally, I'm very much against that, when it, when it goes to this extreme. But, once again, my opinion. I'd like to hear some other opinions, though, so I can get a good feel. I mean, I think our shoreline ordinance actually does a fair job of covering a lot of stuff, and it misses on some things. So, just to think on that, but also, we're, I kinda struggle with the title, accessory structures in single-family districts, and then we go to accessory uses. We use that language a lot with the same thing. I think they're two different things, personally, to me, a structure, if you did look up a definition. When I think of someone doing an accessory structure, I'm not thinking of a fuel storage tank, personally. I, I'm not thinking that, I'm not thinking a. I'm not thinking a fence necessarily. You know, your gazebos, you know, storage sheds, screen houses, all that. Then I'm thinking of a structure, but as far as a use, you know, other customary incidental uses, that's kind of different than a structure.
So fences are typically structures. You're right that uses and structures are different and they usually have different meanings and definitions. Uses are more like the keeping of animals or using a, your house for rooming, boarding houses. That's kind of a use, but the structures are more like retaining walls, decks, gazebos, as you mentioned.
So this, this chart should just be for the structures that we're looking for in the shoreline? Or do, do we have two separate charts we should be looking at really?
No, it's, it could be titled accessory structures and uses.
And uses, so, okay. And then...
Okay, so, well, just so we don't bounce around too much.
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I like sticking on this since we dove deep into the accessory thing. I'm, I'm hearing what just, what, what you're saying, Todd, in terms of the restrictions and, and the shoreline, so, but I, but Pat started down a path that I'm interested in hearing more about, which is, so forget about the shore, the shoreline, because I think Pat's also curious about accessory structures with plumbing, just in any standard R1 district, right? And so to stay on that thread a little bit, I remember there was pretty healthy debate over the years about the conditional use permit process and dwelling units and, you know, whether a standalone garage on the site, you know, is able to put in full plumbing and toilet and shower facilities and everything, you know, through the kitchen sink, and all of a sudden it, it becomes sort of a makeshift...
Living quarters.
But now we're assuming something.
Pretty quickly. What's that?
Now you're assuming something, that that's going to happen in every case.
No, I'm, I'm trying not to assume anything, but I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to like, I don't remember all the details, so I'm trying to, to bring up that talking point because it kind of relates to the whole dwelling unit thing. But I, I feel like we didn't restrict that, right? I mean, if we, if we would have restricted that, then Pat wouldn't be asking the question because it would be in, in the ordinance that that's not allowed. And so where we, I feel like where we ended with that discussion was that those dwelling units still are a conditional use permit. People are going to break the law if they want to break the law, but, but the additional plumbing facilities in an accessory structure is, is permitted, not, not implying that that means that you can just turn into living quarters because there is still rules around whether it can be considered a dwelling unit and someone's living in it. So I'm just trying to bubble up some of the history, talking through that. It, it does seem like it would be a stretch to try to bridge the gap and have something unique about those lots that have accessory units that are, because I think you're right, we cover it with a hundred-foot restriction, something up close to the water, shouldn't have sewer, shouldn't have those facilities, but if it's beyond that hundred feet, it seems like consistently applying the accessory structure requirements to that house as well as any other typical residential home in the, in the community. There's some consistency there that, that makes sense.
Didn't we recently remember that, that CUP for an accessory garage with the living quarters for the mother-in-law, father-in-law up in, on the north side of Victoria? That was fairly recently that we
That's correct.
Approved that with sewer and they were going to, yeah, because they were going to connect into
Shorewood.
Yeah, they were going to go into the Shorewood sewer system, even though it was located in Victoria. We, yeah, that was all approved by us in the city council.
It was an accessory dwelling unit that was approved with sewer and water and living space that conforms to the building code, you know, fire, smoke, exit, all that, through a CUP.
Right.
Which is how those are processed or are right now through us. And we approved the CUP and it went forward and...
And that was even, that was shoreline of our, that was, they, they met the setbacks, but that was even more restrictive because it was in the shoreline district.
I think that your point is very good. We can't take away someone's rightful use of their property, and we'll end up in court if we don't have a pretty darn good reason to do it. And that's why your hundred-foot setback is a very good reason. And beyond that, I don't know if we could show that it's a good reason not to allow Scott to come in from the garden and wash his hands and et cetera before he comes in the house in a, in a shed.
I'm not sure that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, finish.
I'm not sure that Pat's trying to become more restrictive, or staff's trying to become restrictive. I think they're just trying to simplify our current code and have one resource to go to. I don't see anything on this list that's more restrictive than what we've already got. I think it just gives us one point of reference to go to, to clarify what we can and cannot do, which is what we've been doing the last eighteen months, trying to clarify our current codes.
But he was talking about adding it to the R1. If, if it was something we'd look to add to, to not have water and sewered detached structures on, within the R1 district. That was one of his questions.
Is it restricting that? Are we suggesting we, we...
Well, yes, I was, I was asking if you wanted to add more accessory structures to your list so that it's clear.
Permitted use.
Right. But then...
More restrictive uses.
But then asking the question, do you want these accessory structures to have water and sewer to them? Because right now it's unclear.
So we can say, yes, we're okay with having sewer and water there, and yes, we're okay with this, those structures, and yes, we're okay with they have to be compliant with the DNR restrictions like we have here, and they have to stay outside of the hundred-foot, hundred-foot buffer.
Right.
So we're just clarifying what we've already got and maybe just simplifying it, putting it at one point of reference.
He's also asking in a regular R1, I'm not talking, we, we got for the shoreline.
Right, regular R1.
A regular R1 if we want to allow that.
And I would say, yes, based upon our current standard of practice.
And I mean, is that something we have to write in? I think Pat's asking that, yes, within the R1 detached structures can have sewer and water?
Well, a lot of the cities, when they prohibit it, accessory structures without water and sewer, is what they usually probably say.
So the comparison with other cities, right, you provided the information. What's the community impact, right? I mean, what value go up in housing, does it dissuade people from moving into the community when you, as a result of these, of the comparison that you provided on a little bit of a higher level?
I don't think there's much of an impact when you're talking about accessory uses of people moving in or not moving in to a, a community.
It's important enough to outline, though, right?
It's very important to have it listed in the zoning ordinance so that when somebody, homeowner calls me up and asks, can I do this? I have a, a clear answer to them as opposed to bringing it to the planning commission, and now this guy has to wait, you know, two or three weeks to get his answer. And that's what I'm trying to do is clarifying this so that we don't have to go through this for the homeowners.
I know I've had more than one accessory structure with a bathroom in it in my lifetime. It's just easier.
And you were grateful, right?
I was, especially come January, February, where funding my neighbors are running through the snow.
Is there a way that the city can look at water usage to ensure that it's not being used as a temporary residence?
That'd be a tough one, I think.
Yeah, it's, we meter usage, but we don't, we can't decide, decide for between somebody's who's using a regular washing for, in a garage, they're washing their hands versus somebody living there and taking showers.
The volumes aren't significant.
Yeah, if I wash my cars.
So what they can do, Laura, though, is what they have is a, a automatic meter reader, and it regulates the amount of water each property uses each month or three months, whenever they do their reading. So when they see a spike in that person's deal, when they run their report, high water uses, unregular water usage, it shows all the properties that have a higher level than normal for the past blah, blah, months. And that's how they find leaks, toilets that run in people's houses, drippy faucets. In Minnetoka, where I happen to work, we send a message. We send them an email, say, we've noticed a rise in your water. Please have a plumber check some of your plumbing or check it yourself. Otherwise, have us come out. And they, that exact thing is what they do, especially for a higher demand. If they were to all of a sudden have a dwelling unit, turn their garage into dwelling unit for a family of six, they're going to see that spike. And then they're going to know what's going on. They're going to send a letter and usually followed by a complaint from a neighbor that there are people living in the garage.
Yeah.
So it's a combination of things that covers itself fairly, very well. And it's really handy in businesses. When you get in Minnetoka, where you have a lot of businesses, and all of a sudden the water just goes through the roof, well, that means there's a bad leak somewhere or, and it, it's a good resource, and that's what we have now with the electronic meter reading, where they can run those reports and find that stuff out. So it is possible. I just don't, I don't think it happens. So it's not something that happens other than the leaks in the house and so...
I, I, I think it would be pretty self-regulating, though, in a R1 district if all of a sudden somebody's, you got two people or somebody living in that shed out back, that you're probably going to hear about it from a neighbor.
Extra cars.
Yeah, all of that that comes along, especially in a community like this.
Yep.
All right. So with regard to that, it sounded like, I mean, there's general support for clarity by stating that accessory structures are permitted
Right.
With, with sewer and water within the R1 district, right? And applying the same logic to riparian lots as long as it meets the hundred-foot setback. Is that, that's kind of what we're all in agreement?
But at the same time, your bigger question is, okay, that's, that was one example because we had a citizen call you. Let's look at all these, let's, let's update this and boom.
Right.
Adam.
Do we see signs in the R1 district?
Political signs is typical.
Oh, just temporary.
Right.
Corner signs, okay.
Real estate signs.
We have an ordinance on that in our sign.
Yeah, there's a residential section in the zoning ordinance, but we should list it as an accessory use.
Okay. I forget about all those for sale signs and...
So you just want to talk, talk through these, Pat? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, again, my intentions of drafting the zoning ordinance, from a big perspective, is not to tackle any really difficult issues. So to me, the difficult issues come when they, when somebody asks the question. What I would recommend is taking the, the easy ones and highlighting those that you want to allow as an accessory use or a structure and go from there. And then anything that's, for example, let's see, where is it? Renting no more than two rooms. That's not something you really want to discuss right now, and I wouldn't recommend it. When somebody wants to come in and make a change, I would make a change then. So the things I kind of listed are things I think are easy that you can go ahead and start adding to the, the zoning code.
So I hate to be the pile of mud here, but so before I would decide which ones, that's why I didn't mark any on my sheet, which ones I would accept. We also have an ordinance in section 10960 under accessory structures that limits. If you have an attached garage, a detached garage, and a shed, you can't have all three. You can only have two of the three. So if we, if we list the rest of these as accessory structures, like a gazebo, is that going to count as our two or three? So we got to make that clear then too.
Right.
But, yeah.
Because if you, if you have a television antenna on your roof, then
Exactly.
You can't have a garage.
Accessory structure, then does that count against your garage? You know, you know what I'm saying? I want that clear enough where just those three, storage shed over two hundred square feet, because that'd be a building permit.
Right.
And then detached garage and attached garage. Okay. That makes that easier then.
Yeah, you don't have to choose between the list.
Yeah, it's, it gets sticky there, so...
Do we have a minimum square footage associated with a structure with plumbing?
A structure for plumbing? No.
Okay.
There, there is. It's a building code. Your bathroom has to be a certain size, no matter what, but that's, that's about the only limit to it, so...
That's more of a building code.
Yep, more of a building code, so... And then our maximum detached structure is nine hundred square feet, I believe, otherwise it's a conditional use permit after then.
Anywhere actually needed on this?
No, so what I would recommend is the things that I listed, if the planning commission is agreeable with, I would have you guys say yes or no, and then if you want to add anything else. But I would, I think the easiest way to do is, let me go through this list and see if you're, everybody's comfortable with the list. So...
Can you flip the list up on the board here?
Yeah, I don't have the list, but if you just, so signs, screen houses or gazebos, satellite dish antennas, docks, fences, retaining walls, water-oriented structures, off-street parking, and essential services. It's on my memo that I sent out to...
I have an extra copy. Would you all, you want that?
Yeah.
This is the complete list. The ones you recommended was on your memo, though, right?
Right, correct.
Yeah. So not this whole list, just the ones.
Correct.
Just fuel tanks and stuff like that.
Page one of one of the addenda. And you're suggesting these are permitted uses?
Permitted accessory uses or structures.
And signs you're talking about, do we have to limit that to political and real estate? Or can I put a billboard on my front yard that says I'm selling candy bars?
So it's regulated under the sign ordinance, similar to fences, but we regulate fences under the fence ordinance, but it's not listed as an accessory use under the zoning district.
Okay.
Like he said, okay, now I see.
So I would agree personally with your recommended ones. Be approved for that. I don't see any controversy for me with those.
I agree with that as well.
And so going forward, what I'll do is I'll, we'll publish a public hearing. We'll bring it back to the planning commission. You guys can discuss it again before it goes to the city council. And so this is kind of the routine that we'll do all the time. We'll have a informal discussion, not a public hearing for any zoning changes, and then we'll bring it back to you for a public hearing and more formal discussion then too.
So there are some other seemingly really straightforward ones on this list, though, right?
If you, the planning commission wanted to add, sure.
I mean, just a couple of examples that jump out to me is like television antennas, porches, clotheslines, composting, decks.
Right, so the, the decks and the porches, a lot of cities don't include them as an accessory structure because they're part of the building itself.
Okay, so the fact, okay, so they're on this list, but only because there's some other community that chose to list it as an accessory use.
Right.
Got it.
Clothesline, it's something you could include if you wanted to. As you see, one did, but not all of them do.
Okay.
But again, clothesline, again, you can include it if you want. The decks and the porches, I won't include because that's just part of the structure already.
Seems like, for example, satellite dish antennas. I mean, that's happened to be the technology today, but should it just more broadly include television antennas and
Correct.
Radio and satellite, you know?
Right. We can group that together.
I can't imagine a resident calling the village, city hall, asking if they can put up a clothesline. I mean...
A lot of the associations don't allow them.
Oh, it's like leaving an RV in your front yard and that kind of thing?
Yeah, oh, so it's, that's an, it can be an issue.
Okay, that's interesting. I never thought of that. Okay.
So essential services, utilities, don't they already have a right of way that they're involved in or in easement?
Well, the... Well, they, they go in your house, so the cable goes to your house.
Okay.
They're not in easement.
Services, private services, yeah. Of course, we'd have to include that, but I don't know if it needs to be accessory structure, though.
So it'd be, these are under accessory uses and structures.
So, don't we have that covered under minimal facilities? Minimal services and facilities ordinance, do you remember that, Joe?
No, not specifically.
We spent the last two years minimizing this stuff and getting rid of all the implications. You're coming in, now we're revisiting everything we've just cleaned up the last two years. I'm not saying this is a particular situation. We got an open chicken ordinance out there, too, I think we have to respond to somebody at.
Keeping of animals is on the list, I don't know if that falls in the chicken.
Coming in, into a unique situation, and we had a bunch of stuff started, and things changed and unraveled and stopped, and we're just cleaning up, so. Apologies, I'm not trying to speak for the whole group, but that might explain some of the confusion we're experiencing.
Are we, are we good with accessory structures? Have we covered that enough, or?
I think so.
Other questions?
I'm good.
Good.
Okay. I, I like to zoom out, there's two other items on your list that you're recommending, but I don't wanna gloss over where you started this, Pat, by suggesting that the first step is to take the zoning ordinance out of the city code. Can you expand on that a little more? And I'm trying, that seems like a big deal, and I just wanna understand what the implications around that are.
So, MuniCode, who keeps our code updated, they make the changes for us, they have a new program where they will allow the city staff to make the changes. And one of the difficulties of working with MuniCode is, and a lot of cities work with MuniCode, but you'd make a change to the zoning ordinance, you send it to MuniCode, and they may take three, four weeks to make the change on the city's website. You really don't know when they make the change to the city's website, and you don't know if they made the change accurately, so you have to go back and try to figure out when they did it, and if the change is, is correct or not. So now they have a new program where they allow staff to make the change, and it's updated just like that. And so we're planning on doing that, converting to the new program. But in, as part of that, what MuniCode will do was, they'll renumber any of the sections that you want renumbered. So what I was gonna recommend is, basically just renumbering the zoning ordinance and have it outside of the, the city code. And so that when we're referencing the zoning ordinance, we're not referencing, referencing 109-dash blah, blah, blah. We're referencing Article One, Letter A.
Okay, so, when you talk about removing it from the city code, you're talking more about logistics and technology, not that it's no longer part of, part of.
Correct, it's all just.
We know is the city code.
It's all just for user, being more user-friendly. It's still gonna have the enforcement, and we'll make sure that with.
You're taking it out of MuniCode.
Or, right.
The, that online service, and managing it yourself in a different way.
Right.
Yeah.
Thanks for the clarity, helps a little.
Yeah, so that doesn't seem as big of a deal. I, I thought that, you know, from a legality standpoint, this was some different fundamental approach, but I, I misread that, so.
I read it the same way this afternoon, so.
Okay, good. Well, I'm glad I asked, then. Okay, so the next two items, then. The provision of prohibiting grades on slopes, eighteen percent or greater, any discussion on that? Seems pretty straightforward.
One thing on accessory structures, real quick, this, what if it's not on this list? When someone calls in and says it, and you're looking for, kinda to clarify what you, what happens when somebody calls in and says, what if it's not on this list? How, we handle those?
So, for example.
Like a basketball court flag pole, you know, something like that.
One is like rooming boards. I'm not recommending the, the, add it right now, because it's a little more controversial, but if somebody says, yeah, can I rent out two rooms? I, I would right then say, no, it's not listed as an accessory use in our zoning ordinance. And if you wanted to get a change, you'd have to come to the planning commission, the city council, and recommend a change in it.
But what about something like a flag pole? Someone's put a flag pole up in their front yard.
So.
I mean, if we're talking about clotheslines.
Right.
Being an accessory structure, what if it's not on this list?
Some cities, they have like a catch-all incidental to, that's typical in the single-family lot, such as clotheslines or flag poles. But hopefully you have a, a, a pretty good list, that you don't have to fall back on that incidental language. So like recreational facilities, that would cover your, your pools, your basketball courts, tennis courts.
For user-friendliness, though, it'd be nice if there was some height restriction to this, like I think a flag pole. What if someone wanted to install a thirty-foot flag pole? That wouldn't, I wouldn't think that would.
Right, so there typically is a height restrictions for accessory structures.
Okay.
And it's usually between twelve to twenty-four feet, depending on the city, I'm not sure what it is here.
Thanks.
Going back to renting two rooms, you said if someone's calling, you tell them, no, they couldn't do that? Why couldn't they?
Because it's not listed as an accessory use.
But it's not denied either, is it? Do we have a, we have rental property ordinance?
So, there, a zoning ordinance, we only allow things that are listed.
Yeah, I think you'd have a tough battle there in the court, unless it was prohibitively restricted.
Yeah.
But, let's knock it off the subject, but.
And that's what I'm saying, that's something that the planning commission and the city council someday should discuss, but I wouldn't recommend discussing it now.
Yep.
It's, just really quick, like, in the context of what you're saying, Todd, like, that's nearly impossible to, to catch everything, right? So, I can appreciate the philosophy to say, hey, look, we know these are uses that are practical and exist out there, and they're explicitly permitted. But to then also say, oh, and by the way, all these other uses are not permitted, you're instantly gonna miss, you know, a significant number of things that are out there, that we can't even anticipate that's gonna be out there five, ten, fifteen years from now.
That goes to the catch-all dialogue that, that's on the list.
Okay, so the other item on your list, then, was the Lake Minnetoka Residential District backyard setback of a hundred feet.
So I'm gonna let Paul talk about this one a little bit more, but somebody has a, a house that is zoned in the Lake Minnetoka Residential District. The house itself is within that hundred-foot rear yard setback, and they wanna add a deck, and they are prohibited because you can't, because of the rear yard setback.
Right, Chair, Commission. Thank you. As we're reviewing the application, we noticed that in the code, in this particular LMRD, that anything that's in that particular zone, you cannot build within a hundred feet of the rear lot line. And so a lot of the principal structures are actually in that lot line. To add to that, if you include the front setback for the rear, front yard, there's basically no buildable area. And I think there is a provision that speaks to decks and giving an allowance of another thirty feet. But again, that's not enough for that particular area. In addition to that, if you look at the minimum lot size requirements, it's ninety feet, so the ninety-foot lot size requirement is smaller than the setback. So it seems there's a little bit of, it's appropriate perhaps for onshore, long lots, but for these unique areas, or at least a, a number of areas, actually, this tends to be a complicating matter.
The lot is not riparian.
Correct. And there is a non-riparian or riparian sections, but the rear yard setback is the same.
So that, it would be non-conforming structures, what you're seeing, and additions and expansion of that, they're allowed. You could have a deck up to that certain percentage, if you had enough side yard. There's like four bullet points you had to hit to have that.
Right, and this one, yeah.
It's pretty tight, though. I, I was looking at it, and looking at some lot sizes out there, and you'd probably never get to do it, you're right.
Right, and I did outline a number of properties, so I did a little GIS algorithm to figure out how many there are, and there's a lot of highlighted rear yards that this shows up on, and so it's a complicating factor for that particular district.
So we're in the shoreline overlay district, which calls for the hundred-foot setbacks, maybe we need to add language in that district that specifically calls out riparian lots? So the non-riparian lots are more consistent with our traditional districts?
Well, that seems like the original intent of the requirement.
I think so, too.
That hundred-foot setback, I would imagine, was primarily focused on riparian lots, but the Lake Minnetoka Residential District goes far beyond just those riparian lots. But it doesn't seem practical to limit.
Right.
You know, just, you might be a couple houses off the lake, but fall within that zone, well, why restrict your rear yard setback to that hundred foot from what?
Correct.
From the high watermark, though, so it's, just because your lot's farther away from the lake, doesn't mean you're not affected by that hundred.
Well, we're, we're talking about a non, non-riparian lot, where the rear, the rear yard might actually not even be towards the water.
Yeah, okay.
Right?
If I may, this particular parcel, the side yard is closest to the water.
Right.
It's probably about a block.
Yeah, so it's, it's a couple houses, so that scenario is a couple houses off the lake, the rear yard isn't even towards the, the water, it's perpendicular to the water. It just happens to fall in that zone that classifies it as Lake Minnetoka Residential. That, that seems like a classic case of the intent has gone too, too far, and, and unintended consequences.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So, but you're kinda dealing with two issues, right? It's one, resolving that aspect of it, that you're not really meeting the intent, but the second is dealing with an existing, existing condition on, on a lot that's, that's smaller than maybe current code, you know, so it's not conforming in a variety of aspects, but it was built at a different time. So it seems like there, there should be some recognition of acceptance for that, that lot, that was, it's never gonna comply with current requirements, right?
Correct.
So that makes that the number one priority on your list, the overlay.
That's gonna be a tough one. Glad you're on board.
Maybe getting a ruler out.
He's a GIS guy, so he can figure that out.
Use some measurements.
So what's the action on that item? I mean, in terms of, is that enough feedback, that generally it's, you know, we support that this shouldn't apply as the, as the letter of the law is written, there should be some acceptance of it's not aligning with intent, and there's a recognition of non-conforming acceptance in some way?
So, part of bringing this to the planning commission, since Paul and I are new, is to get your guys' history of why there's a hundred-foot setback on non-riparian lots in there. That's part of it. The other part is to say to the staff, yes, this really doesn't make sense, you should go research a little bit more and bring it back to us.
Yeah, I think my exposure, it was the shoreline ordinance where that hundred foot came in, and ninety-nine percent of the things going forward at that time were the backyard was on the lake, you know, so the, the rear yard setback is the only thing we were focused on. We haven't had anything in front of us that has been a front yard or a side yard like this, so. I think that's why it was never addressed at an earlier time. So just ignorance, or whatever you wanna call it, but now that it's in front of us, I, I agree, it's something that needs to be done.
I agree.
All right, anything we need to cover in that discussion topic? Everybody good? Any other questions? So, moving on then, next on our agenda is city council meeting updates.
I, I attended.
July twenty-third?
Yes, I did. And, the, you have, and we backed it on, the parking study committee. And I found the meeting unbelievably fascinating because of the discourse and conflicts that occurred at that meeting. And I do not want to tell you about it, because, but I did make copies of a newspaper article from the Chan-Hassan Villager. And it's a very good accounting of what happened at the meeting, and I would just pass them out and make interesting bedtime reading. You'll fall asleep before you finish.
I got it. I was there.
Just pass it down. And, two lessons to learn from this. Number one, and we've all been told this, be careful what you say, you never know when you might be quoted. Or when an email that you sent, you thought in confidence, might be shared. That's one thing to learn. And the second thing to learn is, well, my father had a saying for this, don't be caught with your pants down. And that's the second thing to learn from, I think, this meeting that we had, that they had. And it just, as a new member of the community, I think I far, I, I understand more what has happened in the past, and I compliment the city staff for their level-headedness and their expertise in how they are, are functioning. And I, just a little personal opinion, we, we are not in disaster when it comes to our staff. We are really, we have a very happy, productive staff. And, that's all I have to say. If you have any questions, let me know, but that's it.
Thank you.
It was quite something.
I had one thing. I, I watched that also.
You did?
And, but I'm, I'm not, you summed it up beautifully.
Thank you.
They, there was a discussion, at our last meeting, we approved the, the Borough's Restaurant, the conditional use for the parking lot. And that went to the city council last week, they had a public hearing. And basically they approved everything, as we had stated, one condition was added, they're just gonna trim some of the foliage along the, on the back. There was no discussion whatsoever about the added dollars or anything, so they thought in line with our.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the only thing I was a little disappointed, and I, I saw the same thing, too, and I had to fast-forward a lot of it, was there was no reference, once again, to us staying course with the the accessibility issue that this town has. There was no, no mention of that at all, and I think it's paramount to every business that's coming in that, we have stuff that's non-conforming right now, and we're ripping in ourselves for a lawsuit. This is a huge deal, the state is pushing this forward, it's called discovery of borders and eliminating borders. It's a big program, put them under the handicap council, and it's, it's, the lawsuits show up more and more often. We've just gotta keep our eyes open to it as a planning commission and city, all the above. It's sometimes things get forgotten, and we can't forget, that's the most important chapter of the building code. So, I was a little disappointed, nothing was mentioned about that with this going forward, but hopefully the building official will take care of that going forward.
Well, hopefully we're talking about that issue in the context of, not that we're trying to avoid lawsuits, but because it's the right thing to do, provide equitable access to all citizens, it's just that simple.
Yep, and, and I think you've known my past, that I bring it up, and every time there's a development in our parking situation, is can we get that person into that building safely? And equally, so.
A quick question for Scott, just out of curiosity, how do they handle the final parking? Do they add funds? Do they do anything?
They did not, they didn't, matter of fact, they didn't even, that, the point of, you know, we discussed the.
For a long time.
It was the five thousand.
Yes.
And it went around and around. That wasn't brought up at all. They did, you know, it's, it's gonna be restriped, and it's gonna have to meet code, current code, so they didn't go in, best to my recollection, they didn't go into detail, like Todd's point about the handicap zones and things, but my assumption was, to code, that's what we're talking about, so it's gonna have to meet that. And there was some more discussion about the, kinda the parking in the back, you know, and depending, and it, it, it sounds like they're gonna, like they said with us, try and get the employees back there first and foremost, and then, you know, some of the signage along the Hartman side now, where the other businesses are. And then, you know, some of the signage along the Hartman side now where the other businesses are, that's more or less, we'll, we'll take care of that. The only real change was just to cut down the foliage, which I'm not exactly sure where, they said around the back. Cara added that. I got to look closer. I'm not sure where all the foliage is, but...
So they've cut the foliage back already? So if you walk back there, behind there, you could see where they, it's been trimmed. And the 5,000, going back to your question, the planning commission had a recommendation that they have to pay the 5,000 parking impact fee if they didn't have enough parking. And if you remember, the Cara was recommending that they do diagonal parking in the back, and that would have to reduce one of the spots, and that's why that $5,000 fee came into the discussion. Since the planning commission, between the planning commission and city council meeting, they moved the parking farther into the site, away from the street right of way. And so Cara was comfortable with the three parking spaces that were 90 degrees, and so they didn't have to pay the parking impact fee at all.
Perfect, good. Thank you. I was just curious where that ended up. On the parking thing, remember they're going to take on Stiger, Steger, Stiger, depending how long you've been here? That was supposed to turn into parallel versus diagonal. Is that still happening?
Um, yes. Yes, it will at some point. I think what they're doing is they're going to wait until the parking spaces on Stiger going this way are installed, and so that they're not losing the parking spaces. But ultimately, that's the plan.
Thank you. I'm out of order, I'm sure. Sorry.
Well, technically, that would have been great for miscellaneous, but we'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is miscellaneous. Did anybody have anything else to add?
I have a quick question, just back on the council meeting. Was there any discussions about bike racks? No?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, there wasn't, but it's something that staff's going to look into in the future.
Anybody else have anything under miscellaneous? If not, I move that we adjourn.
I just wanted to mention one thing under miscellaneous, sorry. I handed these out, and this is, I mentioned at your last meeting. These are, this book was written by two planning commission members, I think in Chan Hassen and and Orno. And they have architecture degrees, and so it's basically an architecture book written for the layman, trying to make it easy to read. And also, it's kind of fun to read because they use a lot of examples in this area, since they live in Wayzata and Orno. So it's very interesting and does a great job of discussing the the architecture of, you know, what's good and bad in architecture. And I would request, because they cost $25 per book for the city, that you keep them as long as you are on the commission, and then whenever you're out of the commission, to return them, that'd be great. Then we don't have to keep ordering more.
Great.
Just trying to save the city some money.
Thanks for the resource.
For those of us who did not bring our binders because they didn't follow directions well, would like us to drop them off?
Yeah, you could. The binders would be great. I just want to include the downtown parking, not downtown parking, the downtown master plan, which should have been in your binders the first time, because that's an important piece for you. And I also have some dividers so that when you're, it's easy to reference. So, and Mary Jo, the handbook, I'll give you one your next meeting, but it basically is everything you want to know about being a planning commission member. The Minnesota APA, and Minnesota Planning Association put together a really good planning commission member. That's something different. That's similar, but we're going to talk about it. Theirs is more of just the language and the wording.
Anything else, miscellaneous? I move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, everybody.
Now, for those who want to stick around, we're going to have a planning 101.